Let's call this meeting to order. Would everybody join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Dawson, may I get your roll call, please?
Mayor report.
Here.
Trustee Connor.
Here.
Trustee Short.
Here.
Trustee McColdy.
Here.
Trustee Trembley.
Yeah.
Deputy clerk Fisher.
Marco.
Marco.
Different tenants all of them.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mrs. Dawson. I believe everyone has a copy of our last meeting minutes. Will there be any corrections or any additions to these? And if not so, could I get a motion to have these accepted?
I know.
Second. Minutes accepted, trustee Connor, seconded trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Report of the mayor. I'm going to try to talk too much this evening, but I only got two pages, so it won't be bad. Uh, I was put... That letter was put in my mailbox this past week. And with regret, sir, I have to read this letter. Dear Mayor and Port trustees, It is with regret that I submit my resignation as youth commissioner for the village of Champlain effective January 31st, 2002. I have enjoyed serving as youth commissioner and though and through it, I have met many wonderful people. I feel as though my tenure as youth commissioner brought structure and stability to all programs as well as a needed buildup of equipment. However, times change, as do our lives, and I feel it's time to turn these programs over to a younger, more energetic person. Maybe someone with children involved in these programs. This year and next, we'll see less monies allocated by the state to help the village pay for its youth programs. Everyone will feel the pinch. To that end, our service program has been combined with that of Rosas Point to afford all use of both communities. The opportunity to take a computer course at Northeastern Clinton Central during the summer and in conjunction with and coordinated with swimming program. I will submit a 2002 budget before January 31st, 2002, and will be available to assist my successor in any way I am able. So do I get a motion to accept this resignation?
Uh, so motion with regrets? Second.
Motion, trustee Connor, second. Trustee McColdy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Gene, for all your time. And with this passing letter, Gene and I have spoke this week and even today, and at this time, I would like to make an appointment to be the youth commissioner. And this individual does have children in the program, and her name is Tammy Kelsey. She lives up here on Screw Street. Can I have a motion to instate Tammy Kelsey as youth commissioner of the village of Champlain?
Is that motion?
Sir?
Motion made.
As of February 1st, 2002.
Motion, trustee Trembley, second, trustee Short. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Probably anybody that has been with me on the board, I'm a great believer in education. If we are to survive in what we have, our water and sewer and what have you, our code enforcement, there's going to be an annual code school March 2nd through March 4th. It's for a code enforcement officer, Mr. Sullivan, and has a total price tag of $463. I do believe that the funding is in place for that. Our funding should be in our accounts for our schooling. So at this time, I would like to make a motion to send our code enforcement officer, Bob Sullivan, to the code school, March 2nd through March 4th.
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion. Motion, trustee McColdy, second trustee Trembley. All in favor?
I just got one question.
Yes.
What account does that come out of?
What I've been looking for.
I know that's where I ask Janice to look into.
Was that under code building codes or did you take that out of regular schooling when your budget did in general waters or?
It should have been codes, but I'm not sure.
I guess zoning and affording, but we don't have, uh...
Put some zoning and affording.
Just a good background, it's not stolen.
Because I know we put away for that last year.
Yeah, I'm sure we did, just where.
Where that may have been. Because that's one of the things that I... I'm very... I'm a stickler on that. Because if we don't keep up with it, we end up falling behind.
Well, this particularly, you know, where it's never-ending change of... Or maybe it'll end up coming out of my...
You take it out of the general?
I think it's come out... I think we put for schooling.
Is it just a general schooling?
We have schooling in general here.
Right.
Okay.
Because I knew we'd put it in. Was that your only concern?
Yes, trustee.
So we have the motion. We have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I think I... I got a question that I need to ask Mr. Sullivan, and probably he can help us. And I'm sure, I think everyone here is sort of wondering. Uh, I talked with Bob. Bob had put all the paperwork together, and I believe it was mailed out to FEMA and CMO on the remainers of our grants money. And I was wondering if there was any indication of anything at all that they may have said this may come to light?
No.
No?
Get it in there. They're processing things faster than they were.
Okay.
So we should be, we should be all set, you know? Just has to go through the normal channels. We'll see where it goes from there, but it should, we should get it all, all back.
And to see what was happening is we have, as the village put this money forward, and we're really looking to get reimbursed for it, so our treasury is more viable. This past Friday, I had a meeting with Adoree Kurz on the Empire Zone program. She gave me this correspondence, and there's charts in here. And from what I gathered from the meeting that I had with her was I was very impressed. It was a very constructive meeting. What will probably happen, she's going to be meeting at the end of the month with different people, and she's saying that we may need to pass a resolution through the village stating that we will be a part of the Empire Zone program. From what she told me, the businesses that are built and owned by the corporation who builds them will pay their regular taxes, their yearly taxes, to the village and wherever it might go. And as it states right now, the state of New York will reimburse them. I asked her at the end of the meeting if she would be willing to come to a board meeting to give every trustee and everybody here the insight to the whole program, and she said she'd be more than willing to. So I think my, my question is to you, do we, or would we like to have Adoree Kurz come to court, come to our next meeting in February?
At that time, if there is a resolution that is needed, I guess she could probably present that to us also.
Right. So I figure our next meeting is going to be the 11th of February.
Helbert, did she at any time say anything about whether or not they were going to build that additional road and the infrastructure that was planned?
Uh, no, there was no mention of that. All she did was interject to me that a couple of things that were supposed to have taken place last year actually moved to the Plattsburgh area. This program will alleviate a lot of that. That's why they were in Plattsburgh. We need this to help make our park attractable. I think she can fill in the holes better when, when she comes, but anybody that will have questions, she'll probably jot them down during the month and probably bring it or ask her when she comes, and I'm sure that she'll be receptive to be here.
Did she say how many years this reimbursement by the state to be?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Ten years. And she said it's not a part of it, it'll actually go to 15, and that's actually a reduction. But in all actuality, this is a win-win situation for our industrial park.
And for anybody else goes in there, I guess.
Uh, right. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
For us as well as any, anybody that goes in. So I would like to see if Janice or Donna could get hold of Adoree and ask her if she'd like to attend our 11th meeting, February 11th. She'd probably be a guest speaker at 6:30.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is anybody got any correspondence? Uh, they seem to, we seem to have a bobcat problem.
I didn't mark that up with you.
Our little loader. Apparently the motor was blown. The motor got blown up on it. It's right now at Dragoon's Farm Equipment and the mower is being repaired. And the estimation of that repair is around $4,500.
Forty-five hundred dollars.
Uh, Jim Bob's report.
Right.
Uh, what I'm looking for is the time.
Should be getting it back this week.
Should be back this week.
My calls have no...
Okay.
You know the question will come up.
Right. Because it's a viable piece of equipment around here, especially at the wastewater treatment plant and for whatever we do for our sidewalks and everything. And we've been fortunate because Mother Nature has been very accommodating so far. Okay, thank you very much. Next issue I was going to bring up in this correspondence was correspondence from Griffiths International on their request for funds. As we all know, we were here, and I would like to find out what the board's opinion is on that.
Well, I'll offer my opinion. I think when the representative from Griffin Corporation was here, they've stated that there would be no cost to us as far as the village of Champlain for whatever needs to be done to abate the remaining asbestos at that particular location.
Right.
My opinion as far as holding back some money from the contractor that we contracted to do the work, I think is not a viable option either. I don't think we should do that. My opinion is they're not going to receive anything from us or probably the contractor.
Any concerns, trustee Short?
I follow along with him. It sounds, that sounds pretty right.
Trustee Trembley.
No, I agree with Chuck.
Trustee McColdy.
I also agree. I think that it was originally stated when they were here that they weren't going to seek any money, that they would take care of it, because at that point, we had said that we did pay them once to go through and look for the asbestos, and they missed some, plain and simple.
And the additional cost should be on them.
Right.
If there's any, they should be liable for it.
Well, I think we all pretty well heard the same thing, and I...
Yeah.
And my feeling was, I make it unanimous, no, as far as I'm concerned, no reimbursement, no funds at all. It's a, it's a mistake that was made, not on the village's part. I just wish the mistake wouldn't have happened because it really changed the whole outcome of this down-street demolition, and it hasn't been to the better. So you're right. Okay, well, thank you. I just, I wanted a board opinion on that. Any correspondence, Robert's correspondence? He says GSA has done well in alleviating a lot of the filtration into our wastewater system, but he also has said that they have not addressed the manholes. Have you been able to contact anybody up there and see when they can do this?
Yeah, they're putting it on, supposedly on next year's budget to deal with that.
Okay, so in other words, they're willing to pay higher, higher bills? Because I think what happens with it is when we get that big flux of all that stuff coming in, I think, didn't we send correspondence to them stating that if action wasn't taken, they will probably be getting a raise the rate?
Yeah, we have a figure of way of measuring it, yes.
I think that, I think that needs to be brought back to their attention. Even a temporary fix would be better than no fix at all. There are things that they can do now to try and correct some of that problem.
Especially with the vapor room.
Yes. So if you would, probably from the recommendation of the mayor or the board, that they try to address that, even if it's a temporary fix, to, to not get into any added expense on their part.
Ask a question, what is their budget year? Is it January to January?
I don't know. I didn't ask for that.
Next year's budget, is that January 1st budget? I'd like to know.
Or is that 2003?
That's right. I mean, that's, that could be, that could be another year and a half from now, by the time it gets taken care of.
Well, we've been seven or eight years getting this far.
But, you know, I think there are things that they can do, and I'm sure you could even guide them to that, that there, they are things that they can do for a temporary fix for now, even if they band it on the top, they can do that and then take the band off to if they have to get in. I mean, there are things that they can do to help them.
Some big things they can do.
Yes, there is. So if you would do that and find out what Mr. Connor's concerns, I would appreciate And I think, I only have one more thing, and I think everybody's going to be happy. There, I'd like to address the requisitions that Mr. Sullivan put before us. A multilingual reader for water meters. Now, is that the one that we've been talking about and before, that you can load them all up into there?
No.
Okay, I think I need to know a little bit about it.
What this does is reads more than one manufacturer's, it'll read two different manufacturers.
Of water meters.
Water meters. Well, where, the other thing that we were talking about, these are really only for spot readings and stuff. Someplace down the line, when we get enough of the oil-filled heads, and we will be able to probably go to a different type of system, but that's way down the road.
That's not something that's going to be happening within the next couple of years?
No.
I didn't think so, because I was wondering where we would get all this money from.
That's right. You can't. You can't. Wouldn't come right, being mayor.
How many different types of meters do we have?
We only have one at the time, but the battery keeps getting screwed up in it. This takes a standard battery rather than a specialized. Takes around one diode.
The reader, or...
The meters themselves.
The meters themselves, not the reader, but the meters themselves. How many different types of meters do we have?
We only have one right now. This will give you the option of not having just one.
Okay.
But in conversations past, maybe, maybe Chuck wasn't here, or Francis already missed that, wasn't it getting to the point where the meters that we do use now?
Are getting very expensive.
Are getting very expensive, and we may want to go to a less expensive, and this way it'll give us an option to save money on the other end as well.
Now, with multilingual reader, you can specify which type of meter you can read with it.
Right.
Okay.
See, this is the option we were looking at, because the meters now, you were saying it multiple.
We're conning it to one.
We're at, we're at the mercy of one meter now. And if we can get one for three-quarters of the price that we're paying now, we'll be saving our money.
And are these also oil-filled, these meters that you're thinking about? And how many do we usually buy a year?
It varies. Depends how many of them go kaput. The old type that were originally put into the water system, they don't have a lot of The plastic actually weeps through and gets some moisture into it, hence the use of the oil fill, which really the water has to displace the oil. That becomes a difficult situation. The other thing, this is a, this doesn't, this isn't a magneto, I'm sorry. The old type was running on a magneto-type setup where it would wind a little spring, and it would snap, and that would change the number outside. And that went kaput in them. You know, when trying to get into somebody's house, who wants people walking in their sues? You know, you can't have that when you're not home. It's not like it was 50 years ago. A little different.
So what are you saying is the meter that they're replacing with is a much better quality meter, it's an oil fill?
There are even companies that don't make oil fill, but they make a glass handle that doesn't, doesn't weep through the same as, as the plastic. I wouldn't have believed the plastic would weep quite as much as it does, but it does.
Because we are in the business of providing a service, and we need to make sure that we're billing correctly for that service.
Sure. Okay. That would just, that particular account will be close to nothing once we purchase it.
And we also have that 12-foot gate for our water plant road.
Is that a metal gate or?
Yeah, just a swing gate. It's just a, more or less like a cattle gate. All I want to do is, there's a ditch there on either side of the road. I want to put this where the ditch is. But I have the kids going up there, or maybe not kids, I don't know, and they go up and have a little party and whatnot. They've sprayed our doors up there before and everything else. This will kind of stop them out where they can be seen. They can't get by near the Z's line.
We need to secure around the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah. The plant itself.
Is this a temporary solution, this gate, or is this a permanent?
Something that'll be permanent. It'll look good.
Is this something that's going to be before you get to the berm?
No, no, this is at the water plant.
Oh, the water? Oh, I was saying, okay, I was saying wastewater.
No, the wastewater plant has a gate, barbed wire, the whole schmear.
But didn't the water plant have one?
It does, but it's way, it's in the woods. The whole plant is in the woods.
Okay, so this is going to be before.
This is going to be before.
Out where you can visibly see them, they would have to...
This will probably be around Mr. Brown's property right now.
That's exactly right.
Just before the... I was thinking the same thing.
Because I'd had, I'd had a conversation with the former crew, and he was down there, and there was, they could see where the people had been partying and what have you, and we need to, and we need to again try and keep as much people out of there as we can. Great? So the requisitions told $514. Do I get a motion to approve these requisitions?
Some of them.
Motion by trustee Connor, second trustee Trembley. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Only one thing I, I had left is I'd like to ask for an executive session after a regular meeting to go into a personnel issue. And that would be it for me. Trustee Connor?
I have one thing right now, is just a question, and probably all the trustees are wondering themselves. When would we have the Christmas decorations taken down? The weather isn't too bad, so...
They're down now.
Oh, I missed it.
You missed it.
Came out today. All right, there you go. Great.
We're at the, at the mercy of somebody else to take it down.
But I just wanted, I mean, we've been fortunate with the weather, and I just wanted to make sure that they get there now.
And put away.
That's all I have for right now.
Thank you, trustee Connor. Trustee Short?
The only thing I had was I took upon myself, I talked to the individual on Cedar Street about, and it was on, on the old business, on a handicap issue, and we discussed in late about the parking issue in front of her house, and being a handicap myself explained how it could be. And she fully understood that putting a handicap parking in front of her house wouldn't solve her problem. So the issue... So, the issue's been taken care of. And I explained to her that handicap parking's for everybody, and parking there and putting a handicap, you cannot do it for yourself. And it's being on a public street, and putting a handicap parking there makes it a public handicap parking place. As for myself, having a handicap parking space, I would be able to park there, as I did, and she understood that. So I said, we cannot designate parking for yourself. She understood, so.
So in other words, actually her request for that is no longer, she's...
Right, it's been taken care of, and I appreciated her comments, and I told her, I said she had any more, please write to the board.
Oh, yes, thank you very much for taking care of that. And would that be it?
That's it.
Trustee McConley?
Yeah, just one thing. Let's see, the annual water system inspection, dated January 3rd, 2002. Briefly reiterate some of the things I was reading here. Says the water treatment plant is in overall good condition and well maintained. So that's a feather in our cap, it says, with the exception of a fence that has been damaged by a snowplow.
And we fixed that last week.
All right. That was one of the things. And the recommendations that were cited were, of course, the fence at the water plant. Let's see, the relocation of the overflow pipe should be constructed in accordance with applicable standards. If the overflow pipe is not relocated, then a screen should be placed over the existing overflow pipe outlet. The call-out box at the water plant should be replaced.
We fixed it already.
All right. And then the O and M manual should be completed and submitted to the C C E O H for review.
Yeah, I've only gotta do a new map on it. You'll get to review it before it goes to anybody else.
Before we send it out.
Right.
All right.
So the fence has been repaired, the box, the call-out box has been repaired?
Is that going to the right number?
Yeah.
I think some of that's been changed. We'll get into something later.
What about the overflow pipe?
The overflow pipe is, right now, it's less than desirable where it goes, it goes up to the neighbor's property. And what we've gotta do is get a couple of elbows and bring it down below grade, and bring it down to the edges of the road where I can run it down the ditch and put a, you know, rack out of some sort on it, so we don't have any little criz deciding to move into it.
That's something that we can work on, and then the spring or whatever?
Yeah, we have to have software.
So we may need to schedule that for the spring, so we get that taken care of. Everything else looks pretty good. I was pleasantly surprised when they said it looked in good condition and well maintained.
They tried.
So let Larry know as well. That's all I have.
Thank you, trustee. Trustee, trustee Tremblee?
I have no report.
I have no report. Report of the Treasury.
I have to be able to revenue expenditure report for December, as of December 31st, if that was the one. We also did a water sewer billing for the month of October, November, December, dated January 1st, 2002. The water billing was forty-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And the sewer billing was sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents.
On me, and I'm gonna probably ask a question maybe I shouldn't ask. Anticipated revenues from that is a little, about a hundred thousand dollars or so?
Four.
Water and sewer and...
That billing, I see.
Yeah. One hundred and twelve. And what I'm saying is I, we should recover most of that in this billing period?
We don't collect all of that, most of it.
Most of it. That's, I think that's just where I'm swaying, that's all.
How far, as far as for the year income from the...
You mean as opposed to what was budgeted?
We budgeted a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred, and as of this billing, we have taken in about eighty-nine, so we're down. So, no, we're really down on, we're also down on the money right here. Budgeted two hundred and eighty-five, and we have an earned balance of a hundred and forty-six, so.
How many, we got two more?
Yeah, we have two more doing, yeah, so.
Maybe close.
Short by about ten, since we've taken in a hundred and thirty-eight. Just about half, and we've got a half left, so it's a hundred and forty-six. I think it'd be a long figure that long. Yeah, that's not so bad, that's only off there about five thousand. For the year, for the budgeted, about thirty thousand dollars, and we're taking in about seven.
They tend to concentrate their waste as it comes to us in the summer months. In the winter months, this becomes much more difficult for them, and it freezes in the tanks, so that we end up with a much lighter mix and more of it. And perhaps next time we do a contract, we should change the formula to a weighted formula, so that we would be able to even it out. There's less sols in the winter.
Didn't end up by the time of year, do you think?
Well, it's because, yeah, it's the weighted, weighted sols that we receive.
And we've collected through the summer, and we've collected through only a bit of the winter.
I can give you a thousand gallons with five hundred pounds of sols in it. I can give you a thousand gallons with fifteen hundred pounds of sols. That's, and that's what they're doing. I mean, it's clever what they're doing, and it's good business, but we have to be smart. So, I mean, but we've gotta balance it.
So we should keep that in mind, but...
Yes.
Yes, we should.
Just one other issue, Troy and Banks and Saltland. They were going to do a review on a cable TV that was brought up at the last meeting. I called there twice, 12:20, and I called again after Christmas on January 8th. I never returned my calls, so I don't know if they're all interested. Which is small for them. I can call again if you like, except I called on the 8th, and I called around 12:20, I don't know how you want it.
Well, I think you've made two attempts, I think you've, to me, you've done your fair part. I don't know about the board, but...
Well, I think maybe, maybe at some point, maybe if one of us want to call. Maybe if I get free day, I can call in the office and make a phone call, see if I can... Sure.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carter. Report on the superintendent.
A lot of words here. You have my written report. Do you have any questions on it?
I think we've addressed quite a few.
You've addressed quite a few, yeah.
What was the van, you said, saw, you said, saw that you'd sent it to Ross's point for some repairs, what were the repairs?
Ah, there was some problems with the brakes and such. And that's been completed, yeah. I'm trying to think what else. No, I think we also had a tailpipe come off of the muscle system. Had to be done. Probably should have been a little more explicit than that. Is there anything on that? I think everybody was also copied with just a slight overview of what the crew's work was of the 2001 year. Hope that made you satisfied. I think it's a pretty good report.
But you, being a... That's why when I said the night of our Christmas party, for the amount of people that we have in our small crew, we do quite well.
Oh. Oh, okay. I also have another purchase for a cap. Sorry, I got missed here. It's for Williams and Law Book Binders. When we go out and do our meter readings, I wanna be able to give one guy a book, all format. What we've been doing is writing it on a piece of paper. Guy getting on the screen, writing on, you know, the address on a piece of paper. Two guys would do this, and then two guys would have the book. What happens there is sometimes you transpose numbers, there's just believe you're some problems. For the binder that we normally use, they're rather dear, they're seventy-five bucks apart from Williams and Law Book. They fit our papers that we use. So I request two of them, and seventy-five dollars each was a hundred and fifty dollars, and four dollars and seventy-three cents for shipping.
How long do these books typically last?
We've had the last ones in almost ten years.
A lot of paper.
They're pretty long.
If we can, if we can help without trying to eliminate the human error factor, I think we need to do that.
Yeah.
Because again, Francis, I'm sure, Kim, Scott, Chuck, myself, we shuffle a lot of paper in a day's time.
It's easy to make mistakes.
And it's easy to make a mistake, it's...
Transcribing is a bad policy.
Yes.
We need to try to get away from that as much as possible.
Eventually, and probably will be another six, seven, eight years. It'd be nice if we could just do everything automatic, so that it would be read, bang, 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 there'd be no human error. You're not fiscally in place to do that yet.
If we are transcribing anything right now, we should be saving the original document, whatever it is, whether it's a sticky note or whatever, those things should be saved.
Saved and put what it is.
I think he did that.
Because...
I'm not sure.
That could be a fallback point. But I think we're in agreement, I'd like to make the motion to purchase those two books for our big panelists. Motion made by trustee Schur. Second trustee Tremblee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would there be anything else for Mr. Sullivan? My heat, I'm gonna get off easy. Correspondents.
Item one, correspondence, the notice of photo registration day, which will need a motion. What it is stating is the village election will be March 19th. Registration day will be Saturday, March 9th, and votes will be held here at the village office. Registration day will be from noon to five, and election will be, of course, tonight at 1:00.
Motion made by trustee Schur, or trustee Connor, or trustee Connor? Second trustee Tremblee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. My hearing's going bad now, but...
Item two is correspondence from New York State Attorney General regarding the Public Service Commission's recent decision.
A little controversy over this.
Item three is correspondence from Pacific International requesting funds for the justice removal, which is all addressed. Number four is a water reduction request from Ponyfilia or Paul Vivian Lane, and I think Bob had discussed that with, that he should respond to that.
I think they did. It was a leak in December, it was a frozen pipe according to Larry, because he went over to shut the water off, the person who had the leak, and they repaired it. That was not the problem with the, with the water, and is not the problem now with the water. They have water, well, today it wasn't running. He went over and took the reading this evening, because he was asked to do it late in the day. They're still using a hundred and eighty-eight and a half gallons a day. Now, it was marked down previously that there was a, an estimated report, because it was, or an estimated reading, because it was high, but there was an actual reading tape. And the actual reading was correct. The thing is, is this is on an oil fill head. It picks up, when you break a wire, and you have an estimated bill, when you put the wire back together, it reads the meter wherever it is. You don't automatically lose that amount of gallons. You now have picked up what wasn't picked up with the reading, the previous reading. So that in fact is a correct bill.
So in other words, what's happening is they must have a leak someplace else.
They're using it. He said the doll, when he looked at it tonight, I thought that for a second, and I remember what he said. He said, "I pulled the meter up tonight, Bob," he says, "it wasn't spinning, everything was shut off." You can tell when it's leaking. There's a little red gadget on top of your meter, and it turns. And it was not turning. So they're using it.
So in other words, this bill is, this request is non-marked.
Pretty humble.
Item five is information and correspondence from an oil company town, that will just help benefit through. Item six is correspondence and evaluation from Firma.
Do you want to look into that one correspondence before?
This here?
Yeah.
I looked at it, and I think way back, we had discussed co-insuring type of thing. And we were very nervous about it.
That was through the state, didn't it?
That was through the state, yeah. I mean, it could work both ways for us, and you could really get yourself in a big bind if there was any kind of...
Oh, I think, I believe we're very happy with our insurance carrier right now. But I see you looking at it and staring at it a while, and I thought to myself, maybe...
Well, I remember from when I was on board before, we had looked in this quite heavily. And it was at its conception at that time, and we weren't too sure if that was the route to go. And I'm still not sure that we'd wanna go that way. Because we're too small, and we could get hurt.
Yes, okay.
Could be wrong, that's my thing.
Okay, six was the Firma evaluation and correspondence. Seven is the notice of the zoning meeting with Dr. Lamb, and that was in effect while we're calling 10 board members, for January 16th, April 30th. Date is the 2001 annual water inspection report from the Clinton County Health Department, addressing the problems addressed. And nine is response to our letter dated January 2nd, in G L C per record, in... GLC per record in, in Dyers Corporation, we probably missed it. Little mix up there, I guess. I was responding to the letter, but I didn't realize Bob had written the letter, so we kind of, kind of mixed it up.
I made a boo-boo.
I did have the letter, oh, we did this. But I did have to use the letter, actually. It's got a little bit of something I apologize for that.
It's my fault, yeah. He didn't have it. And anyway, you have to respond, there is, there is a question here that needs to have the board respond to. And that is, I would have GLC continuous processing and discharging while waiting for the permit. And perhaps the Water and Sewer Committee wants to sit and discuss that.
While they're discharging right now?
They are today.
But definitely say...
Because I said, I told him that I would bring it to the board and since it was only a couple of days ago, I would bring it to the board and let him...
Was there a period that he wasn't discharging into the system? Wasn't he told to stop?
Right, he was told to stop.
Did he stop?
He did not stop.
Then I'm not going to prove, I'm not going to give my opinion. I, I, you know, he hasn't done what we asked him to do.
He, when we brought the letter to him and, ah, he showed me what he was doing and how he was putting everything in place.
But it was not in place.
Well, it was pretty close, yeah. Suck you.
But I mean, he has never stopped discharging into our system and he was told to stop. Who stopped?
With the lead stuff.
I mean, I just, he does what he wants to. But it just... I have a problem with that, I'm sorry, but, ah, we just get totally ignored. And as far as I'm concerned, until everything's in place and the permit is issued, we shouldn't be discharging into the system.
What's your thought?
That's why I asked you to address it.
I followed right along with him and he says...
Hey, it's not a problem. Trustee McColdy.
I think we need some type of recourse when, when he doesn't abide by the rules here.
When he doesn't comply.
Well, I think there's, there's things that, you know, mechanisms in place that would...
That can be done.
That can be done and...
Of course.
And I thought we were going towards that line.
Is this, is this new permit going to be raising the level of VOD he can discharge or is it going to be the same?
Well, the permit that was issued was higher than the village law allows, which is what a permit is for.
Right.
That's another discussion that we need to have, you know, that I think that I want to have with the board to make sure that whatever I do, whatever I issue as a permit is legit. It is something that you can live with.
The other thing I'm getting at is, let's say we, we give him a permit for a certain level and he's tested and he's exceeding that level, what recourse do we have at that point?
Shut him down or find him.
I think...
Or both.
I think we should shut him down or...
I think we need to find him.
We did find him once.
Yeah, but how long ago?
Three years.
Yeah.
Twenty years, maybe?
Three, and, and he's been, since then, he's still continued to exceed...
He was doing quite well until we left the testing up to him.
So what's, what's going to make anything different than he's going to have his own testing done and we'll have the same thing as will continue? I mean, it sounds like that we have to, we have to be a watchdog over, over him.
What timeframe are we looking at to, for that permit? How long does that take?
Permit take a little more no time, it just depends on whether or not he does what, you know, he complies with what the board tells him to do.
I think in all actuality, I think we could live with the last VOD permit. It wasn't detrimental to the plant. If, if he stays within that guidelines, I don't feel where there's... We have to give him a little leeway, but we don't have to give him a shot. Now, if he can conform to the VOD level, I was set last time, it was at four hundred or five hundred?
I forget, I, I said it at two, two different things. I set it on, on a concentration limit and a pounds limit because either, you know, one correlates to the other. So if you use less water, it can be more concentrated because we just talked about a few minutes ago.
Right.
And it didn't create a problem, you are correct.
So I think, I think the, the opinion of the board and what I'm feeling right now is he needs to show us that that's in place and until that's in place, he does not discharge. That's, and this is why we have the Water and Sewer Committee, I mean...
And who's doing his testing?
Well, he didn't take them. He just didn't take them.
And, and the letter here says...
Oh, it was done by the same lab, done by the same lab we use.
He was taking the samples.
His, ah... I don't know who did the, he did have them in...
How do we know the samples are coming from where they should be coming from?
Because that's why we'll go back periodically, and which is what we ended up doing, and taking a, a sample and sending it out.
How often is he going to get samples?
He's supposed to get them every month.
All right. And how often are we going to be checking that?
Could be once a month or it could be once every three months or every six months. It costs us money to do that.
They can pick and choose.
I didn't understand that.
They can pick and choose when they get the samples, right?
They're not supposed to, but yes, you're correct.
And, and that could not give a valid reading.
If he, if he puts it in the vets the way he had intended to do it, the way it was supposed to be done, he could really, he, he would have a harder time picking and choosing, but it would, it would benefit him greatly to just follow the rules.
Let him get it, is that we have to, if we have to watchdog this, then when we do fight him out of the limits, we have to crack down fast and hard just to make it clear that he's going to follow the rules.
All right. I, I agree, I think that there's not going to be any leeways. I mean, once, I mean, he's been...
We've done it time and time again, you're right.
He's gotten away with it time and time again.
One too many.
That's right. So the next time that anything is out of the limits...
No, we're going to do it, we should, we should...
We're going, he's going to get fined, there's no chance for us. Boom.
Is he from this? Does he have a permit right now or not?
No.
He hasn't, okay.
He's illegally done it.
So then why are we allowing it?
Bob, give him the opportunity today to, to get rid of that.
Can I, can I say one thing? I've been on this board six years and for six years...
You had one of these.
This has been coming up.
It's been longer than six years.
Well, like I said, I've been on the board six years. Um, he's been given ample opportunity to fix his system, fix his problems. Enough is enough.
Okay.
There you go.
I mean, that's my opinion.
No, that's fine, no, no, I'm not, I'm not...
He shouldn't be allowed to keep doing this and I'm going to fix it and he sends us the letter and he's going to do it and he's going to do it and it's not going anywhere.
And it's not being done correctly.
Four months from now, we're sitting here looking at another letter.
Same thing.
Usually hot lava behind us, you know.
We are, you know.
And I, I... I realize that it costs us money to do the testing.
We can pass that cost on, though.
That's correct.
But it's accurate if we do it.
Yeah, we can.
That's what we need to do.
And I think to find out if, if he's really, if he's really going to do what he says he's going to do, do we have the option to go in and, and test that at any time?
Yes.
That would be a stipulation.
You don't have to put it in, it's in the law.
We should be able to just walk in anytime and take a sample. We don't have to be announced, is what I'm saying.
No, you don't have to be announced.
And who's expensed? You walk in and take the sample, who's expensed? I think if it fails, it should be at his.
I, I don't think that's spelled in the law who's expensed it is. We can judge it. That's to my knowledge, we can't.
Who would, who would be doing the testing?
You mean drawing the sample? See, we, we can do a, a spot one, which is not, not a fair representation, that's why you do a, a twenty-four hour composite. Once you set up a twenty-four hour composite sample, you're setting the sampler up in front of the guy who sees what you're doing.
Right.
So...
It's not a good thing.
No, he, he has got to do what, we have that little shed, we set it back up, brought it back up there and put it in place up on Ridge Road because of this.
But we can go down and take a sample.
Mm-hmm. And we don't have to tell them what we're doing.
That's right.
If I use that little shed.
You didn't ask my question, who takes the samples?
We do.
From us?
We do, oh.
In the...
Steve. Plant operator.
It could be anywhere.
Well, you've got to be familiar with the equipment and he has storage of the equipment. He maintains it in his building because he uses a closet.
Well, I think the, the general consensus of the board is...
Shut him down.
Shut him down.
Which I thought we said months ago.
Bob will interject to him that this, this is a, this is, no, there's no options. You are down until you comply and you have to have proof to us that you are complying before a permit will be issued.
I, I, you know...
I mean, I...
It's my fault that he's still operating.
That's neither here nor there.
It's a band-aid operation.
Right, that's, as of right now, as soon as you let him know tomorrow, which I plan on that tomorrow, it will be terminated until further notice. It costs us more to, to, to take care of it, it costs us more if he's out of limits, it's, it's, it's detrimental to the system.
It's costing money all, all around. We're, we're wasting our time in here tonight discussing it.
So we shouldn't have to. So we have dressed the problem. Okay, ah, old business. Veteran's exemption. I believe everybody's got correspondence that was even written on the back from our clerk. So in all actuality, you're saying this may be an increase at this time? Well... I myself would read through it and, you know, it's... I haven't been there as far as a veteran. And I, and I believe that what we could do as a village fathers should reflect that we appreciate them having been there. I, myself, my opinion is I, I, I think we should go with the county and whoever has instituted this, but I would like some comment from any of the board members. Well, if there's no comments, I think we need to put this into a local law. We need to make a meeting for a local law.
I need to get the local law first, and then set up the meeting at the next meeting.
Okay, then. So how about do we get the local law amended?
Well, if the board agrees, the legislature, I can just have a try to keep them draw the local law for our next meeting.
Did I get a motion to that effect? Motion trustee Short. Second trustee McColdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this will, this will be drawn up for our next meeting and then we'll have to set a public hearing for March. Thank you very much. Any other old business? New business? As, as, as the board has known, we've, on our last meeting, we got the approval to get the funding to cover our clarifier. Clarifiers. Ah, I believe Superintendent Sullivan has written a contract to that effect. At this time, I don't know if he's got any replies or anybody has...
Yeah, the bids were opened on Thursday at two o'clock in the afternoon. Mrs. Dawson has the results.
We had two bids that came in. One was from Shickle for nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and then it was Adirondack Shelter for ten thousand dollars.
Now, when, ah, hold on, stubble the price. What... Does the quality of the building that we're looking for, is it jeopardized at the lower bid?
That's what I pulled it, that's what I did in my original quote.
That was the original quote, quote from what I gathered.
Yes.
So I think that, that, at this meeting, we need to approve the low bid for the contract on covering the clarifiers.
You awarded.
I awarded it, yeah. Do we get a motion to that effect that we award this contract to...
Adirondack Shelter or ten thousand dollars?
Adirondack Shelter for ten thousand dollars.
I make that motion second.
Motion made by trustee McColdy, seconded trustee Connor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Is there any other new business come before the board this evening?
I noticed in our correspondence, actually, it's in, in our mailbox, excuse me, we received a, a letter from Hometown Cable requesting, ah, our support, ah, through Time Warner for them to continue using channel twenty-four as a local, ah, Hometown Cable station. And I guess I'd like to see S. support and send a letter to Time Warner stating that we would like this to continue and that we, as a village, support what Kelly's saying.
I agree.
You agree?
Yes.
Trustee Short, you agree?
Yes.
Trustee Connor. That's unanimous. A, a letter should be sent to Time Warner stating what trustee Connor had just mentioned, that the village would like to support Hometown Cable for the use of Time Warner. I think their public access is twenty-four.
Yes, yeah.
Twenty-four. That a letter be sent to them stating that fact. Thank you. Going through one more bit of information and, and it, it should have been on old business, but even new business, or before I closed, would have been any other business before the board this evening?
It came, actually, it came off old business because of that correspondence.
Right.
Then we took it off ten as correspondence because when I came in, it was in that this two other municipalities, so we tossed that and then I came back today, so I guess you can put it anywhere you want it.
Yeah, well, as long as we might be able to address this thing, uh, uh, we got correspondence from, uh, Rodney Brown stating, uh, my predecessor, uh, Mayor McManus had put in for after the storm of, uh, Ice Storm of ninety-eight, uh, we found that there were things that we could probably have used in the village and, uh, we were reluctant to, uh, be able to purchase it because of the cost. And, uh, it was asked of FEMA and CMO if a grant could be come out to help us pick up these added re-figure necessities in which today, uh, would be much better if we didn't have it. And our thing was a fifteen thousand watt generator to power this building. Apparently, it's been in in the holdup in bureaucracy or what have you. It's been, now we're looking at two thousand and two. So it's been at least a couple of years. But apparently, from what I can gather from this and this correspondence, I just got to look at it today, states that, uh, this has been approved. What I am saying is, uh, for us to pick up a fifteen thousand watt generator for the village office would cost thirty-five hundred dollars. Which if anybody went out to price any kind of size generator that is unheard of, with this grant, they would be paying almost eleven thousand dollars.
And we have taken that into consideration as well.
And we did take a guess, we put that away in this budget because this was an ongoing thing, like I said. We've had a couple of years to work at. So what I'm saying is, uh, I think the thing that it says in here is that we, as the people, have to be the caretaker of it and maintain it. And we have to have a signed agreement to that effect. Uh, i- is that what I'm reading, uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Well, you're reading quite a couple of things, yes. Property records must be maintained, I was just trying to read because I hadn't read it from time to time.
I think just stating that-
I'm sure it's, it should be any different than any piece of equipment that we should, they should be maintained and records being kept of that maintenance.
Yeah, a PM record, yeah.
So I don't see where that, that would be a problem. Is, is this something that we have to vote on or have we already voted on this way back when?
Well, we did, uh, we actually put the money in this year's budget in anticipation of this grant coming through.
Right.
And it, and it has come through, but I think even, even a motion on the records to dispense that money to purchase it should be in our records.
And to authorize your signature.
Right. Okay. Uh, I think we need to do that just to cover all the bases. Like I said, I wish I'd had a little more time, but I, I don't think there would be anything detrimental in here that Mr. Brown would send us anything that would. But, uh, he's been working very closely with this and, uh, I respect the man in all means, so.
I make a motion that, uh, we give Merrill Port the approval to sign this contract for the purchase of a new fifteen thousand kilowatt generator. Does that include the radios?
No.
That's separate.
That's separate, that goes to the fire district.
Uh, I think you have to sign it, yeah.
Yeah, because this was done before the fire district came into existence.
They will, um, they will supply the portion for the radios and that hundred dollars.
Right. I will sign, I will sign that, yeah, because it was put through under one thing. Do we get a second to that?
A second.
Second, uh, motion trustee Connor? Uh, second trustee McColdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, uh, for your, for your help in that matter. Now, at this time, if there's, uh, no other business to come before this board this evening, I would like to see if I could get a motion to go in. Oh, Warren, yes, thank you. Presentation of Warren.
I have two bills that I'd like to add to the board tonight, your permission? The one that was just approved for Willington Law Book. The amount of one hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents for the heater binder. And I have one here from William Graham for two hundred and fifty dollars. He's been looking on our website over the, over the holiday. And, uh, he's updated about years with minutes. And he's also been a commandant of directions so that if it's on or I may someday find him.
Right, I, uh, I'd had a conversation with you earlier on that. He was supposed to have gotten to me, but he finally called me, I believe it was Friday evening. I think our website is good. That was a thing that came to pass, uh, years ago.
That's been a couple of years.
Right. Uh, and there hasn't been anything done on it quite a while. And he said while he was home, he would like to bring it all up to date, smooth it up a little bit. Maybe help the ladies so they, it won't be so far behind and everything. And, uh, I inadvertently told him to go ahead. I think we could just add his pay, I, it's, it's, it's got to be something just to sit there and do that. Okay? And, and at the thought of it, it was like twenty to twenty-five bucks a month or whatever, but then he ended up doing this and doing that, so.
And it's a budget that I don't-
And it's a budget that I don't anyways, to keep it updated, updated. So do I get a motion to add those, uh, bills to the board?
What is that motion?
Motion trustee Connor, wait. Second. I'll be sure I say, uh, second trustee, was that common?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thank you very much. Now, could I have a motion to go into executive session, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I have to do something.